I can send that to you and if you want, I can send it to the mayor. If we share with the group.
Any further questions for Ms. Walz?
Yeah. If you could pick one thing to make it short, what would you say the one thing the city could do to help generate some sort of industry or jobs out in the new industrial park?
We're, we have been limited in the industries we've gone after because of water and wastewater capacity for the city, and I know you're working on it, and I've been in on those utility growth plan meetings, so you're working on it and you're addressing it. I wish it was a quick fit. So that's one thing. We need more water wastewater capacity than we could, we can expand the industries we go after. The other thing that you might want to consider is putting funds away for job training using added dollars to, to create a job training fund. Not a lot of communities have done that, but Tippecanoe County and Lafayette, West Lafayette have each pledged portions of their added dollars to job training, and so when a company comes in and is highly skilled, meets certain wage parameters, once it hits those benchmarks, there's a pool of job training funds available that you can offer as a local incentive. Job training, workforce training, that's the number one issue site selectors and companies are faced with right now. Our unemployment rate is very low, which is great, but that means you're stealing, you're either stealing employees away from existing companies, or you're scraping the bottom of the barrel. So that's, that, so that, those would be the two things that would, that would help.
Would you say we've lost any opportunities because our water and wastewater?
Not yet. Mostly because when they give their water and wastewater demands, we, we either don't submit our property, or we submit our property but fully intend that we're going to be cut. But Project Nuggets, which is a food processor we've been working on for over four years now, there's a little bit of new life into that project, but water wastewater will be, my hope is this project will drag out long enough that we'll get the water and wastewater issues fixed before, before it becomes an issue with them.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, the other thing is, you guys have been great to work with and great partners, and Dick's been fantastic on our board, and Joe Mayfield is also on our board. He's our board president right now, and Mayor Evans comes to our meetings, and he's engaged and, and active. So you guys have been great to work with, but intergovernment cooperation and working together in a cooperative, friendly manner goes a long way. Site selectors are meeting our local reviews reports, and, and so, you know, Tippecanoe County is using their intergovernment cooperation as a selling point. I also use it as a selling point, but, but I kind of need more, I need more evidence or proof to back up my words, and that's not, I'm not simplifying out the, again, you guys have been great to work with, but I think overall in the county, that's, that's something we, we need to work on.
Any further questions for Ms. Walz?
Thank you for my three wishes. I appreciate it. Please.
I apologize. Chief Sterrett, I know we had the meeting minutes from August, but you had something happen currently or recently that I don't know if you wanted to address with the council?
Oh, I was just doing an update on the accident with the two fire trucks that anybody was interested in hearing. So, yeah, Friday, a couple Fridays ago, and long story short, we were working on a vehicle accident on Elasco Bridge, and as we were in the progress, process of wrapping up the accident, a semi loaded with grain crested the top of the hill, and for whatever reason, presumably mechanical, it could not get stopped. The guys, when they responded, they had parked the trucks defensively like we're talking, teach them to do. They always question why. Now they don't question why. Semi crested hill came through and hit our rescue truck on the left front quarter, sent it 20 to 30 feet down the road, and then beared into, the semi beared into the side of the bridge and struck the side of the new engine. Estimating 20 to $30,000 on that truck damage. I don't have the actual numbers back yet, but somewhere in that area. The semi came to rest about four to five feet from the back of the ambulance. I had five personnel in the back of it, two patients and three firefighter and P working with the patients. Had the guys not parked the trucks the way they did, that semi would have probably killed all five people in the back of that engine, but that speculation, it got stopped where it did, so. We're gonna be, the big engine's gonna be out of service. It leaves for Illinois this week to get repaired and should be back within four to five weeks. Initially, we thought it was gonna end up having to go back to South Dakota, but the shop in Illinois doesn't bump the truck from, except they can do repairs in Illinois unless they get into something major structural, which they don't foresee. The rescue truck is still in the air. I think adjustments are coming in this week to look at it, and then we'll know more about that. The good thing about this, nobody was injured in the secondary crash. So, yeah, we'll be handicapped a little bit for a little while, but it's nothing that we can't overcome. I, I just wanted to update you on where we're at, and give them the first to the council to turn to.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have any questions for Chief Sterrett?
Which way was the semi going? Was it going north or south?
Semi?
Yeah.
Semi was headed to south.
Any further questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief Sterrett.
Thank you.
Move back to new business. Next on the document is ordinance 2017-13 read by Title I, so the Delphi 2018 budget. Part of debate on this matter is their motion to pass ordinance 2017-13 on first reading would be prepared in the fashion that we discussed after the work session, the majority of the council recommended. I can go through the changes with Council's desires.
I thought it was my understanding that we had to pass amendments first.
We can pass amendments first, yes ma'am. Generally have a first reading amendment goes up, a second reading is when amendments are presented, but we have no procedure here, so we can, I mean, we can pass amendments initially, so desire. We have amendments to be presented? Do you like me for saying?
I thought you had amendment like 2017-13A, I thought was more.
So what, provided for the city council is amendment to ordinance 2017-13. This is the mayor's proposed amendment. There's some items, line items on here identified that would revert back to the proposed budget, so in here, and I won't go through member line item specifically, but in here, the amendment would put the new patrolman back in here, which would impact the insurance, fight and med, PERF, as well as police training. This would also increase the code enforcer budget from 2,500 set by the council to 20,000 as proposed by the executive branch. This would reduce the general fund budget for community crossings match, which is no longer necessary because the city of Delphi was not awarded community crossing funds for the Samuel Milroy project. So it would reduce the general fund from community crossings match from 21,000 to zero. It would reduce the motor vehicle highway fund, community crossing match from 100,000 to zero, and it would reduce the local road and street community crossing grant match from 20,000 to zero. As we're not doing the Samuel Milroy project next year, we no longer need the street department engineering budget, which would have gone to construction inspection. We had put in edit for engineering a new roadway. If we were to get something out either on the bound property or south of the school, as Ms. Walz was talking about, so we put 100,000 in edit to go towards engineering of new roadway. What I've proposed is instead of taking it from edit, is that we budget 100,000, one thousand in the street department engineering line item. That's taking it from 21,000 that was community crossing grant match and moving it into that engineering line item. I've proposed increasing the police guard budget back to what was proposed, to 15,000. That's where the trade-in, that we could buy new police vehicles to continue the rotation of police vehicles, which is one every three years gets traded in. And then I've proposed an amendment to replace the green assistant from zero to 20,000, as proposed by the executive branch, and with that, office supply to 2,000 mileage to 750, posted to 2,000, and then increasing Main Street from 5,000 to 10,000. To go along with community crossings, I forgot, the rainy day fund, I had requested an additional $60,000 in the match, and on the highway relinquishment fund, I had asked 280,000 for a match. Both of those, the 60,000 and the 280,000 can go down to zero, leaving 100,000 in the rainy day fund. So this is my proposed amendment. If there would like to be a motion for passage, or if you have questions, may I?
There are questions for passage of amendment A?
So, okay, we're just talking about the adjustments, which you just wrote off. Yes, sir. Everything else would stay as indicated by the council after the work session. Except for those line items listed. Well, I'll move with approval. We have a motion to approve proposed amendment A. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion regarding amendment A to ordinance 2017-13? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
Motion fails.
I would move to consider the six items that were proposed by the mayor due to the community crossings fair or the other, and to include them, then I have to.
President Pearson, please.
I made copies. I would propose including those six items, and, and then, and I would move to approve the proposed budget voted on by the majority of the council at the budget workshop.
We have a motion to amend the ordinance to include those six changes. Do we have a second to that amendment? Tucker.
Do we have any further discussion regarding the amendment proposed by President Proton Pearson? If I may, President Proton Pearson. Would it be possible to include the 21,000 from the general fund, community crossings, to take that and put it into the street department engineering to get us up to 101,000 in that line item, since you've reduced the edit engineering line item from 100,000 to zero? That's not for community crossings, that's for reengineering of a new roadway. There's a lot of 100,000 in Samuel.
What is it again?
So we had 100,000 in the edit engineering line item, which President Proton Pearson has moved to reduce to zero. We have 80,000 in the street department engineering line item. I'm asking if it would be possible to move the 21,000 that was in the general fund, community crossings match, and add it to the street department engineering to make a total of 101,000 in the street department engineering line item. Yes, sir?
For the purpose of, of the roads or?
Engineering of the roadway.
Like what we've discussed.
Yes, sir.
For residential development, perhaps?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would agree with that. I think that's a wonderful, so.
Do we have a second to amend that amendment?
I accept that.
Do we have any further discussion on the proposed amendment, amendment to the amendment which includes these six items, the 21,000 added to the street department engineering line item? Do we have any further to date?
Yeah, I would, I think using the letter we all received from Ms. Abbott about the property next to her stuff, I believe we have numerous properties that are in that run down and need some assistance that are bad and have examples that she has complained about. I agree with her wholeheartedly, and all of it is because we have the codes and we're not enforcing them. I would like to see us keep the code enforcement money where it is, so we can man that, find a better way to get all that going. If we take away all the money from it, then who's gonna do it? We debated about the police department doing it for years. That doesn't happen. We already need more people because we're short of people. I would like to see the code enforcement 20,000 stay there. That's my say.
Do we have any further discussion regarding proposed amendment, those six items regarding community crossings plus the 21,000 back into street engineering? All those in favor amending as such, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to amend carries four, one. Do we have any further amendments to offer to proposed ordinance 2017-13? Very nice. Do we have a motion to through ordinance 2017-13 as amended on first reading? So move. Do we have a second?
Aye.
President Proton Pearson, move the second. Any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance 2017-13 as amended on first reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
How it is?
This is, this is included.
Plus this.
Plus, that's a plus.
All right. As this is a time sensitive matter, is there a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction?
I know that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2017-13 on first and second. Well, on second, please.
Do we have a second?
Tucker.
With a motion and a second, I'll call the question as to suspending the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction. It must be unanimous consented of the councilors present to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction. All those in favor of suspending the rules of procedure?
Aye.
Opposed?
When does it have to be, Emily? Arguing on time.
Deadline. If it's not in to the O G F by November 1st, then we revert back to the O B.
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules of procedure passes unanimously, so we'll move on to, is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-13 on second reading? Is there a second?
Aye.
All right. With a motion and a second, we'll open forward to discussion. Is there any discussion? All right. With a motion and a second, I'll call the question on whether to pass ordinance 2017-13 as amended on second reading. All those in favor, aye, opposed? Motion carries four, one. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-13 as amended on third and final reading? Is there a second?
Tucker.
Do we have any further discussion regarding ordinance 2017-13 as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that a yes?
No.
Okay. I think it's all the city attorney, Martin. She is relevant in the hospital at this time pursuant to the Indiana Code. It must be a two-thirds. Two-thirds vote of all elected members. I've unanimous consented members present to consider the ordinance is required to pass an ordinance of a legislative body on the same day or at the same meeting at which it is introduced. As we don't have a two-thirds majority in reading, or two-thirds majority, I'll go ahead and say that we're gonna meet tomorrow at 7:00 PM at City, here at City Hall, for the purpose of calling ordinance 2017-13 to the floor for third reading. Yes, sir. Tomorrow night, here. We'll move next to ordinance 2017-13 read by Title I, ordinance establishing salaries for elected officials of the city dealt by from and after January 1st, 2018. Prior to the Delphi notice matter, I'd like to consider the motion to pass ordinance 2017-14 on first reading. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance 2017-14? Go ahead and move on. Don't wait on me. I'll first. Do we have any discussion regarding ordinance 2017-14 salary to 2018? Do we have any motions?
I make the motion. We approve.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2017-14 on first reading. Do we have a second, Tucker? Do we have any further discussion or debate regarding ordinance 2017-14 on first reading? Very nice. A public question on passage of ordinance 2017-14 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. This is also a time sensitive matter. Is there a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction? Is there a second?
Tucker.
Motion and a second on public question. All those in favor of suspending the rules of procedure?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-14 on second reading? Is there a second?
Tucker.
Any further discussion on ordinance 2017-14 on second reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-14 on third and final reading? Do we have a second?
Tucker.
Any further discussion regarding ordinance 2017-14 on third and final reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move next to ordinance 2017-15 read by Title I, establishing wages for certain employees in the city of Delphi from and after January 1st, 2018. Version up consideration says a part-time patrolman wages at $20. Because you got two versions, the newest version that patrolman said is $20, based on a conversation during budget time. Do we have any discussion or motions on proposed ordinance 2017-15?
I make the motion, will you? Yeah, approve 2017-15.
Tucker. We have a motion and a second to through ordinance 2017-15 on first reading. Let me clarify, is this worth $20 for patrolman, or part-time patrolman? No. Do we have any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance 2017-15 on first reading? All those in favor are opposed. Motion carries five, zero. This is also a time sensitive matter. Is there a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction? I'll call the question as to whether to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-15 on second reading?
Some move.
President Proton Pearson with the motion.
Tucker.
Councilman Gersky with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2017-15 on third and final reading?
Tucker.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-15 on third and final reading. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. We'll move next to ordinance 2017-16 read by Title I, ordinance assigning zoning designations to properties within the city of Delphi currently unassigned. Part of debate on this matter, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-16 on first reading. We have got favorable recommendation from the area planning commission after we submitted to them our recommendation.
I know that ordinance 2017-16 will be approved on first reading.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Tucker.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2017-16 on first reading. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. I know there is at least one helping the ordinance. I know there is at least one company owner within that area who was waiting to see if they could submit to their planning division for a change in zoning. They wanted the change in zoning to business, but they're gonna wait and see what the city council did. So I would ask if there is a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introductions.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, however, we need unanimous consent from the city council. Do you mind if we put this, since we're gonna be here tomorrow, if we put this on the docket for tomorrow night's meeting? There are no objections. It'll be on the docket on second reading for tomorrow night's meeting. We'll move next to resolution 2017-8 read by Tyler Lohn, a resolution initiating a proposal to amend the ordinance to include language for Airbnb. Prior to debate on this matter, I ask that there is a motion to pass resolution 2017-8 on first and final reading, as there is a resolution.
I think I included it in the last packet I gave you.
I thought I included it in the previous packet and I forgot, so that's why I didn't
bring it up prior.
I move for approval of resolution 2017-8.
Do we have a second? Any discussion regarding resolution 2017-8?
Maybe for the, the knowledge of the public, you could, and that started.
I just read the memorandum I provided to the city council. I propose resolution 2017-8 to allow priority planning commission to recommend language to the common council to define facilities which offer rooms to rent but do not meet the traditional notion of bed and breakfast, which the council passed, or, yeah, which the council passed in the recent past. The language of our bed and breakfast ordinance provides that to meet the definition, the facility must be operator occupied and provides breakfast to who it's get us as part of the fee along with other language. There currently or shortly will exist two residences within the city of Delphi which will operate as Airbnb. These facilities are different as they may not be operator occupied and they may not offer breakfast as part of the fee. I do not...